I won't ask any questions about mine.
All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, January 13th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2014 regular meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Lyons, Schulken, Rosenthal, Fleischauer, and Dalbert, and Walker, and Burns abstention. They have a motion to approve the -- that motion passes. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 22nd, 2014 special meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's Lyons, Schulken, Rosenthal, Fleischauer, and Dalbert, and Walker, and one extension, Burns. That motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public that would wish to make a comment at this time?
Could you approach the mic so that the folks that are watching on Panda can hear what you have to say? And could you just give your name, please?
Yeah. My name is Steve Ellis, and I'm here on behalf of the Science Foundation. We wanted to welcome, or to invite, I guess is the right word, the board to the Science Foundation opening, open house for the dedication, I guess, of the STEM Lab at the Chanson. That is Thursday, January 22nd, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. So we were hoping that you all could come.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm sorry, could you give the time again, please?
Sure. It's 6, January 22nd, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM over at Chanson. That's the STEM Lab.
Yeah, there are actually two activities over there. Thank you, Steve. And there's a little blurb on the main page of our website. Part of it is the, you know, the official opening of the STEM Lab, as Steve had mentioned, and then there was also an activity over there involving Bard students and some of our, some of our middle school students, I believe, in doing experiments and kind of science night out is, kind of follows the openings. That whole thing is, is a 6 to 7:30-ish type of activity. Yeah, if you could stop by, that would certainly be great.
Wonderful.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public wishing to make a comment at this time? Okay. We have a discussion of the alternative veterans tax exemption.
Okay, so we had this discussion at our last meeting, which seems like it was about five weeks ago, back on December 9th. And at that meeting, we had several members of, of the board ask for some, ask Tom to put together some additional information, which was reviewed after that meeting by the board's finance committee. And I placed in your packet under 4.1 the various number of pages that Tom had, had prepared, as I recall, and anybody can, can feel free, especially from the finance committee, can feel free to jump into the breach left by Mr. Brunel this evening. But he, the board out at the December 9th meeting asked for some different sets of figures along with, with financial impacts depending on, on which way the board, if the board is inclined to approve an alternative veterans tax exemption, there are a number of different possibilities and permutations. And his, his worksheets don't cover every possible permutation, but as I understand it, there is a, kind of, I guess, you know, a standard, or a basic, or kind of the default, the default exemption, and then that, which is the second set of, set of figures that Tom provided for us, then a board of education would have the option of approving the, the basic exemption, or approving an exemption less than the basic, or more than the basic. And again, I'm totally oversimplifying the calculus on this, but that's what Tom did, was put together four different scenarios, the second of which is, is the, the basic exemption, so board members could see what the impact, the potential impact would be on, on non-veterans in our school district, based upon those who currently have applied for veterans exemption offered by, by the town of Rhinebeck, I think. So we have an idea how many people are in our school district are already receiving municipal exemptions, and we're, we're guesstimating that there may be some slight increase where the board of education to adopt one of these exemptions, but we're not estimating that would, it would be a large increase, although maybe some slight increase. And as has been pointed out, as part of several discussions we've had on this topic, this is, is an exemption that is not funded by the state, as the STAR program is funded by the state, but this would be an exemption should the board decide to adopt one of these. That essentially shifts the tax burden to the other non-veteran taxpayers in the district. And that, some, some have, you know, felt that that is, is a potential downside to this. However, we've, Tom has put together the figures so that you have an idea what the, you know, what the potential impact would be in terms of, of a homeowner with, I think, according to his figures, the, the average assessment of a single-family home in our school district, or across the various towns in our school district, is about $326,000. And the, for the, the default, or the basic veterans, veterans exemption, he's, he's got the increase for a home valued at 200,000, 300,000, the 325.92,000, 400,000, 500,000. And for the average assessment in the school district, the estimate would be an additional $19.93 per year for all of the non-veteran taxpayers in the district. And if you look at the other scenarios, they're either higher if the exemption were to be higher, or lower if the exemption were to be a little lower. That's the exemption for a, the average assessed single home in the central school district for a year, additional to other taxpayers. So in terms of, of process, you'll recall that by or before March 1st, the, the board would have to do a couple of things. Number one, hold a, a public hearing to give any members of the community, regardless of their opinion on this, the opportunity to weigh in if they wish. And then, depending on that, then the board would need to decide whether they wanted to have a vote on the topic, and then, like any other board vote, a majority is, is what would forward a, an action item in that regard. If we were to, the other kind of weird wrinkle to the way the law is, is written is that if, my understanding is correct, if the board were to pursue and approve the, the basic alternative veterans tax exemption, then only one hearing, public hearing is required should we decide, should the board decide to pursue an exemption that's less than the basic, or more than the basic, then it's my understanding, there have to be two separate public hearings before the board is allowed to, to vote as to whether to approve or not. So again, looking at where we're at time-wise, we're, you know, we're sitting here on the 13th of January, this entire process with at least one, potentially two hearings, depending on how the board might be inclined, if at all, then we would potentially need to have a second one, and a board vote, that would be an affirmative board vote before March 31st in order to
March 1st.
I'm sorry, March 1st, thank you. In order to file the necessary paperwork and get that in the hopper for the, the tax bills that come out late August, early, the school tax bills, late August, early September of this year, the board could decide to take this issue up another year if they wish. The board could decide to pass a certain exemption this year and increase or decrease that in a subsequent year. It doesn't require board action each year, but it would require board action if the board wanted to change it in any way in a subsequent year. Otherwise, it would just run.
Deirdre.
Yeah, so I'll just share from the finance committee meeting the last time. I don't know whether some of this was discussed at the meeting, I was not outside of that. Boards in the county have done different things. Several have adopted the basic. There's at least one that has determined not to adopt any exemption. I think one district adopted something less than the basic, and then a couple have adopted more than the basic. So, you know, the lay of the land is kind of mixed that way. Our own views from the finance committee were, were mixed, from, you know, support for doing the, the basic, to concerns about policies of the state and acts that are just tax shifting onto other members of the public, and just uncertainty too as well, what the community feels at this point. So that's, last year, I recall, and I, I think all of us could check our emails from last year, but as board president, when I was board president last year, I know, I think we got a couple of different emails from community members. I recall these, one in support and one not in support. One thought the, the finance committee had was to set a genuine, like, some boards frankly might set a hearing and then have it on the agenda to vote that night, which is not a hearing that then becomes genuinely informative to what you're going to do. So one thought would be to set a hearing for our next meeting and try to actually publicize that, and get some feedback from the community, which would enable us to still have time to absorb what, you know, what feedback we got, and make a determination if we wanted to do a second, a second hearing, and then a vote before March 1st. I think that could all fit in. So that was one thought that the, the finance committee had.
Just a scheduling thing, I think we're already meeting early for our next meeting, aren't we? So to hold a hearing before that, which I'd be willing to be at, is just, I just want to bring it to our attention.
Sure. And then, of course, there isn't the interest of the board level to pursue that. I mean, we don't, there's no requirement for us to pursue it any further at all, in any of it.
So it seems to me like the, the next decision, which, which could be decided tonight, would be, do we want to pursue this to the point of having a hearing? And when we would schedule that, and I've given that some thought, and we do have, we do have, at least we talked about an early executive session for, for our next meeting. That said, we, we could still, again, in the interest of, of time and giving us enough, give the board an opportunity to consider what opinions might be raised at, at a hearing before then scheduling a, a vote on the topic one way or the other. I don't think it would be out of the question if the board wanted to, for us to have our early executive session next at our meeting on the 27th, and have a public hearing, you know, at 7:15, or to start the meeting with a public hearing, and then, then go into our regular meeting, you know, I mean, it'll, it'll extend the lateness of the, of our meeting a little bit, but I don't think, I wouldn't anticipate that it's going to be a, it would be a hardship. But I'm just suggesting that to kind of keep on a, you know, a reasonable timeframe. That would be up to you, but I think if the board wanted to go that way, we could schedule it for next, the next meeting.
Lisa.
Joe, if the board were inclined to hold a public hearing on this issue, would we have also to take a position at or before the hearing as to which of these options was considered adopting?
You know, I'll, I'll double-check that with Tom. I'm not sure that that's necessarily something we have to do, because that would almost be tantamount to a, to a vote, which, you know, if, if the board wishes to, you know, to follow, follow Deirdre's thinking, which I think makes, makes some sense, is to, to hear from members of the public who have an interest in speaking to the issue, you know, I kind of, in the back of my mind, I'd be thinking, and we could present all of these scenarios at a hearing, too. We don't have to say one way or the other. On the other hand, the default seems maybe like a place to, to start, but we could see what, you know, people may come to a hearing and say, you know, we, we support this, and we want to see the maximum that the district could do, or we want to see the minimum that the district could do, or we don't want to see this at all, you know, whatever those opinions are. I think when we get to actually them having to vote it, if it's, if the board's inclined to want me to put a, an action item for the basic exemption, then we don't need another hearing. If the board feels like the feedback indicates something other than the, the basic, then we'd have to have yet a second hearing. We'd still be able to, I think, fit it in before March 1st, but it doesn't give a lot of leeway, and, you know, if you happen to have a, you know, a school closing day on a night of a board meeting, you'll lose that app, you know, it gets a little dicier, but we can make it happen one way or the other. I'm convinced.
Laura.
I would just like to say that I'm in favor of a hearing, and hearing from the community, and trying to publicize the fact that we're having a hearing as broadly as we can, so that we can try to reach a large subset and get the community's opinion on it.
Deirdre.
And I'm just in favor of us doing it as soon as possible, because it would be good to get that kind of real-world feedback from members of the community, so that we could be guided in terms of, you know, what, which of these options we might want to consider, and whether we need a second hearing.
Diane.
I'm also in favor of a hearing. I just, you know, it occurred to me today that this, this came to us from the state. This didn't come to us from any member of our community asking for it, or not for it. You know, no one's come to us, so considering something that, you know, wasn't asked from us. So it would be nice if the community would come and weigh in, otherwise, you know, maybe we shouldn't be considering at all, since no one's asked us to consider this.
Well, that could be another conclusion that the board might draw from.
Well, I'll just mention that, you know, I've spoken to a number of veterans in the community who would really like to see us have a veterans exemption. I think, you know, if we schedule a public hearing, I'm sure that we'll have some of them that will come out to speak on it. I just think part of it is that, you know, there hasn't been much publicity about, you know, that we're going to have a discussion, and so they don't know when to come out or whatever. But I think if we schedule a public hearing and get the word out that we're having one, I'm sure we'll have some members of the public here that are willing to speak on it.
That'd be great.
Deirdre.
Oh, Deirdre.
No, no.
So I think it would be, I would recommend that, you know, hopefully Tom is with us, and that maybe we project numbers up on here, so that we actually go through some numbers in a way that whoever's here can see what they are. And also, you know, I think there's some sensitive issues that I know all of you would be, will be sensitive to, but just one of the things we talked about in the finance committee is that, you know, I think that, you know, almost everybody is sensitive to the needs of veterans and wanting to honor and respect our veterans, but that there may well be members of the community who want to come and speak to us and say, the shifting of taxes onto other members of the community is not a fair way to, you know, enact school budget policy, or school tax policy. And so I think we want to make sure that we're open to those, that viewpoint as well, which can be a difficult viewpoint to express without people feeling like they are somehow opposed to giving benefits to veterans. So just to contextualize that a little bit.
Okay. Lisa.
So are we all agreed that we want to have a public hearing?
Well, I've heard five people speak in favor of a hearing.
And I'm in favor of a hearing as well.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll, I'll ask a follow-up then as to whether the board would like me to schedule a hearing for our next meeting on the 27th, at some point earlier, slightly earlier than, or right at the start of our meeting, if that's your pleasure. I mean, I think that gives us enough time to get press release out to the, to the local newspapers, such as they may be today, and, you know, we'll, we'll do our best, you know, short of taking out, you know, $10,000 ads in the New York Times to let people know in our communities that we're going to have this opportunity to, to weigh in, to present some information, to weigh in, and then you can take that under consideration.
Joe, the item that we are planning to discuss in the early executive session at the next meeting, while it's something that we'd like to discuss, is not, it, it doesn't have a deadline date by which we have to do it.
That's right.
So would it be preferable to have a public hearing about this, starting at 6:30, say, and move that item to the next board meeting, next regular board meeting?
We could certainly do that if, if that's what the board would like to, to do. Again, as a practical matter, I've been trying to schedule that executive session discussion with when the building principals are going to be here anyway for their reports. I mean, it's not a gotta-have either, but I'm trying to be respectful of their, you know, of their time being here, which isn't to say we couldn't have that discussion at our second meeting in, in March. Excuse me, in February, rather, excuse me. So that's, that certainly is doable. That said, I, my sense is that we probably are not going to need an hour for the hearing on the veterans' tax exemption. I mean, we've had lots of hearings over the years, and maybe this will be a little different. I hope that people will be interested enough in coming forward and giving us their opinion, but my gut feeling is we could probably schedule something for 7 o'clock and not, not have us sitting around, not, not having productive use of our time. But we can work out the details of that. And, and I would certainly be glad to move the, the other discussion to the, to the second week, and, second meeting in February, if that's the board would like to do.
Deirdre.
Yeah, so I'm just, you know, one thought would be 6 to 7 for early executive session, and start the hearing at 7:00.
That, too.
And if the hearing does need more time, that's fine. We just start our regular meeting delayed because of the hearing. I agree.
Works for me.
Yep.
I agree. I was just going to say that maybe an email to all our parents about the hearing would be helpful, in case people don't read our Twitter feed.
Deirdre.
Just in terms of gathering all the information together for the purpose of talking with members of the public and also reviewing all the options, having that sort of background information about the municipal exemption that already exists, how long that's been in place, and the structure of that exemption could be helpful, I think, in terms of thinking about this exemption.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Okay, I think we have a game plan here. All right. Okay. We'll move on to our annual special education report. Mr. Zip is here.
Are you working off the documents that I provided to the board? Okay.
Hello, everybody. What I, what I would do, once again, go through this thing, we, well, once again, it's the same format, and look at some of the data. I did change a couple fields, just to kind of represent where our students are this year. So if you're missing some schools, what I did want to do is list a bunch of schools and have a bunch of zeros, to kind of complicate the conversation. If that's useful, I'd always go back and add those, just for a sense of history, where our students have been. So it's easy enough to put back in, but I just wanted to kind of keep it simple and clean as you can, and that's why I kind of changed the format a bit.
Richard, I'd also add that, especially when we're dealing with, with our special education population, we, we need to be careful that, given enrollments in certain schools or programs, we don't want to inadvertently identify students and their placement and their, their handicapping condition. So we, we need to be careful about that when we have small numbers of students in certain programs. And I know, Richard's well aware of that, but just kind of reminding everybody else around the table, we have to treat that with, with care and confidentiality.
So what I thought I'd do is just go through the pages, once again, it's all pretty basic, and based upon history. And if anybody has any questions, by all means, we can think of a, kind of a stopping off point. If you look at the top page in PRIME, it's Prime is Concerned. It's got two categories, day programs and residential. And you'll see that right now, you know, the Center for Special Services is probably the day program that we use the most. Once again, they serve students on the spectrum, anywhere from high-functioning students to people who are more classically with autism. For those who don't know, the ESM 5 came out, so the term Asperger's, although it exists as a diagnostic classification, it's simply autism spectrum disorders with three levels of severity, 1, 2, and 3. The Asperger community thinks that Level 1 is synonymous with Asperger's, is high-functioning autism, and they have some controversy with respect to that. But there are three levels of, you know, disability. And what they've done, just so you know, to just a little talk, with respect to autism, they've taken out the intellectual limitation piece from the classification of autism. So typically, they were subdued together, and now they're two separate classifications and diagnoses. So you can have a diagnosis of autism, Level 3, and in addition to that, have a diagnosis of an intellectual limitation based upon medication. So they kind of tease those two things out, once again, understanding that spectrum is just quite broad. But once again, we have four students there currently. We also have two students at the Abilities First program up in Red Hook Middle School. Abilities First handles and works with students with multiple disabilities, students maybe wheelchair-bound, maybe verbal, non-verbal, maybe know a few words, need care with respect to ID, ABLs, eating, things of that nature. So really, some of our most, you know, weakest and disabled students. And typically, they serve them up in Red Hook, which is nice, because it's a program embedded in the middle school. So obviously, they have, they So, obviously, they have their classroom, will work together with the teacher, the aid, and the nurse, but there are chances for integration, gym class, art class, things like that. So, it's nice to kind of have them in an integrated setting, and it's integrated to the greatest extent possible. As far as residential students right now, we only have two. I know that was a question that came up, so we have one student at Anderson who will be graduating this year, and we have another student who was at Crotch Mount in New Hampshire. That's for medically fragile students, and given that student's situation, last year he came to us from a different district, was at the Center for Discovery out in Solomon County, but because his medical condition worsened, he needed to be on an evening ventilator. And there's no program in the state that can handle someone with that level of medical need. So, Crotch Mount in New Hampshire works with students with that level of medical need, obviously needing a ventilator, and they provide some medical care and educational care up to age 10. He just recently moved, so now he's in a, he's at a different school district. So, once again, so you can see, once again, small numbers, not too atypical compared to history. We do have one student at the Center who's pending a residential placement. That's a new process right now, and then speaking to Anderson, I'm not quite sure where they are. So, once again, that's kind of where we're at right now. As far as public, most of that is the BOSI's programs. For those who don't know, BOSI's District means a BOSI's class that's embedded in a general school set. Because BOSI has programs for all entities, it has programs at Higdon National Research Department, it has programs in the high plains, it's got programs in different school districts across the county. If the students were able to be in a program and be in an integrated setting, that's obviously the least restricted environment, and that's the direction we're going to go in. So, we have a couple of students in District BOSI's classes. Soul Point Center, once again, a specialist center, students who have a greater level of need. So, we have several students there, three students there right now. One student at the Alternatives High School, a new student this year who's working on credits, hopefully being able to work towards a major diploma. Once again, kind of new at the last minute, and just once again, wasn't a good fit here given our resources. Someone who came from an integrated class of 112 with a supporting class, and given our high school numbers typically we have a resourceful program, so that level of need simply couldn't even be met here, so we had to go find something else out there. Right now, that's, that's doing fairly well. Another student, no one in the IDT program, which is a program run through Rockland County Psychiatric, stands for intensive day treatment. So typically, students in that program, if you're not familiar, try to minimize either going into a hospital or coming out of a hospital. It's got a one-month program, small group of services. Usually, the mornings are done academically, the district supplies material. It's housed at the Soul Point Center and the Beta Site, and Anthony is all group and council. So, once again, trying to help students who are returning back to program, kind of have soft landing as they come back to high school, or students who might be emotionally fragile, and we're trying to simply halt a psychiatric hospitalization. Typically, it's one month, because they're planning to come back to the district, or maybe to a different program. And then ADT, we have one student, that's called Adolescent Day Treatment. So, once again, that's at BOSI's, and they work with students who are all classified ED, and obviously, although academically can handle the curriculum, they have an emotional study that obviously impacts, they've got a service, social work service, clinical services. They have psychiatrists on staff to work with families, and the fact they can't have psychiatric services themselves. So, once again, you can see the level of support at the ADT program. We have two students currently in the GED program, one pending, a new student who came to us about around Thanksgiving time. Once again, someone who, due to their age, number of credits, region's test scores, it seemed like that was a meta-fit, given what they need and given the time allocations that they have. So, that's something that's happening right now, and that individual's going down to BOSI's to take the practice GED exam, and a Volvos Wells, Dr. Depp in January, tech class also. So, we begin to work on transition skills as far as developing some work-study skills. That individual's never had a part-time job either, so, once again, thinking about the next steps, you know, trying to give this individual valid credential, probably leaving high school at the same time, you know, some job training skills that are actually transfer them to the adult world. And then the ABC program, one student, stands for Academic Behavior Community, and that's at the Soul Point Center for middle school students. And once again, students who, once again, are academically capable, but emotionally fragile, so they need, once again, wasn't working here, they have a small class, once again, take care of emotional functioning, there's a classroom with a teacher, and the social work embedded in the class. So, once again, not something here where, you know, it's just difficult, given more social, you know, with school psychologists, they can be on call, counseling if needed, but given to people that, several are students, there are, you know, various needs. So, once again, a small class, academic support, once again, due to the, to the individual student, and support for any kind of emotional function. That page one, right, if you have anything to add. As far as page two, CPSC, you'll look at the numbers, they're pretty consistent, pretty recent data. On the last 15 years, we have a low of 11, a high of 21, 13, 15, and 16 on the low numbers in the middle. So, once again, 16 students in preschool, two pending, days for the typical last 15 years. So, once again, those numbers haven't changed, remain consistent, well within average numbers. Any other questions from the preschool? Once again, that's pretty straightforward. We go back to page three. We have out of those 16 students, 11 are coming in next year at kindergarten. Once again, you look at the numbers there, that's a little bit on the high side, given that particular cohort, with two students who may need to have a greater level of care. One of those students is currently at the Center for Special Services for CPSC. Another student at the Hyde Park Site, administered by Mid-Hudson Regional. What we do with those students and a couple of other students who come on the fence, we have our speech therapists, both of them from the special ed department, as well as a special ed, to come down and do day visits, talk with the staff. They have good understanding of what the services, services their students need, and just to make sure that with our kindergarten class, if, if it's a good fit, great, they come back, we have our CPSC meetings sometime in March, and recommendations, come back here, services in place. If not, then typically, we'll either stay at the center potential, because, once again, do transitions at school, and or look for a different day, day placement. So, once again, that's fairly typical, given our history. The next one is just students in district. So, you can see, once again, the numbers, our current classification rate is about 11 percent, and I'll go into that in a couple of pages. We had 13 students, new students this year who were CSC students, we have four students leave the district who are classified, so it's plus nine. Changed the classification rate by about 1.5 points. The average for the state's about 13, we're running about 11, and I think compared to other districts in the county, I think we're probably on the low end. I think other districts, the talk to Red Hook, I think we're about 14, and up at Kipps is about 19, I think FDR might be kind of higher, they're in the high teens. So, once again, I think we're doing great as far as identifying who classifies and qualifies as special ed, and making sure we have the services here. Is there any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. And once again, as you can see, those numbers are pretty consistent. You tend to have a bubble between third and 10th. I was going to think about that. Learned disability counts for about 80 percent of all students classified. And just so you know, I want to give a little kudos to our school psychologist, Dr. Nick Montanek. He passed his PhD, and he graduated since past December, so he's here for his license exam in New York State next year, so he's officially a doctor. And I was saying, Dr. Montanek, CSC means, kind of living my parasitic through Mr. Montanek. But you can see, once again, part of the reason for that, and Dr. Montanek is agreeing saying with that, before we can identify a student with a learned disability, they first have to have L, that means learned. And what happens is that it's difficult to identify a learned disability, cave 1, maybe 2, because the sample, the normative sample, has students in there who've had rich preschool experience, and those are happy. So, the parameter's quite wide to determine between the back of the learned disability. And since the criteria is that they have substandard academic achievement scores, it's very difficult to ascertain with kindergarten to a great student, simply because it's developmentally appropriate to be quite across the spectrum, especially if you've got, once again, I guess six-year-olds who've got no preschool history at all. So, many students that come from kindergarten, they know they're often better than, they've already met common core standards. The rest of the students are simply no A.D. and C. So, once again, you take that into consideration, it's very difficult to determine a learned disability. And on top of that, I think I mentioned this a year or two ago, the state came out with a guideline with respect to RTI. So, cave 1, 2, 3, and I think, I know cave 3, I think cave 4, we can classify students who have a reading disability if they haven't gone through an RTI process. So, once again, the state's really careful about not wanting to overclassify students, and we want to make sure the fact that someone's lack of learning isn't due to, say, poor instruction, maybe not the right, you know, method or, you know, pedagogy. So, once again, you have to have an RTI model in place with the additional supporting data, maybe not the classification. So, that's why usually those numbers are a little lower. And then if you look up from about 10, 11, 12, typically, we have here students, we have several students a year who are able to transition to a Section 5 Core Plan. So, once again, they may still have a disability on paper, given our current cycle evaluation results, but they don't necessitate special services. When you think about specialists, two terms, you have to have a disability, and once again, I'm not going to classify students just because they have a disability, but you can't make categorical assumptions, and you have to necessitate special services. So, we have students who may meet some number on a clinical test, and if you're looking at pragmatically during the course of the day, grades of sophomore, studies skills are great, they're achieving, you know, standards as typical as grade-level level peers, and by the time they're sophomore, we've got three to four reading exams under our belt, we kind of know how they're tracking. And then a preparation for college, thus we kind of take off some of the scaffolding thing, and section, you know, move them to a Section 5 Core Plan, where then they can have resource from, say, every other day has a transition surface. So, once again, you see the numbers decrease then, 10, 11, 12, definitely 11, 12, and the bulk of the services then, believe, 3 to 10, I think. Anybody have any questions? If I'm talking too fast, let me know. I'm trying to be real.
We're having to let him have a cup of coffee for the last two days.
I have a hard decision, and my doctor says I shouldn't. Which is painful, because I love caffeine. On page four, once again, we have one student who's already placed. This student is at a district not located here, and followed by the office of the school district. Once again, the order's pretty clear, noted to kind of work with school districts, a district of location, runs the IP, supervises the IP, manages all the services, and then it gives the ability to the district of origin. So, once again, what they didn't want the district to do is have to serve students all across the state, should parents choose to go to other schools. So, once again, you have one student there, who are currently placed, and that falls under the office of the school district. We don't have anybody homeschool this year, and by the time I put this together, we had two students, once again, receiving some level of home band instruction. One of them was the student who was new to us, pending the GED placement exam, and the other student right now, I knew who that was, I know what my student, I just can't figure out where they are in the spectrum. We have two students, once again, receiving some level of home band instruction. And then you'll see at the bottom, as far as special ed enrollment, as far as the school population, and obviously, in our building, over the course of the last 15 years, our school building itself has probably come down from about 1,300 to about 1,155. In the building itself, we have 1103, and we have 110 students who come to our three buildings for services. And once again, as you can tell, 13 moved in and four have moved out. Out of those 13 who moved in, I think there are eight who require some level of outside placement. So, once again, so that was a change as far as programming, budgetary considerations. Many of them moved in already and a placement recommended by the CSC, the previous school, so that wasn't something I was going to change, because obviously, a committee had determined how the best placement.
Richard, can I just question? Is your, so the 13 moving in or move out, I mean, just from what you've said thus far, that's sort of fluid, right?
That's fluid.
Like, so, because I guess I'm just wondering if you have a sense of...
Does that more?
No, if you, if the question is, you know, I'd like to, I think in one sense, we probably have a good reputation for our special education services, but are we also seeing just, you know, mobility? People are coming in and out during school years for lots of reasons, and in terms of anticipating numbers in the future, sometimes, I mean, what's your sense of it? Is it people making a decision to come here, or is it people, some people just like landing here because life takes them here and...
Anecdotally, based upon, and also the homeless liaison for the district, I don't think people land their mind at accident. So, typically, if you're using that as example, if you are transitioning, I don't think, once again, this is, you know, I don't say it's expensive, once again, it's, if you're going to be in transition, this is not a place, you know, it's not a big city, you don't have...
No, public transportation.
You don't have, you don't have public transportation, there aren't, you know, the type of people that end up being a transition, may receive some level of social service, you know, sometimes they may work with local hotels and motels, a temporary housing. So, once again, if you look towards more urban centers where they have that kind of access. So, once again, our homeless count's fairly low. However, you know, Mary and I experienced this this past August, we had a whole flood of veterans come in, and talk to his parents, his children who are classified, you know, the district's got a great reputation, you know, newsweek outlets across the country are number 73 to 78, people take notice to that, it's a great small town. I think people, one of our strengths, I mentioned to the Board a couple of years ago, is that of course, for a small district, unless the circumstances are extreme, we really make integration work. And I think you're seeing the trend in special ed, like, if you go back to the 80s, people became fatuated with programs outside of the school, that somehow there was a series of experts who could fix these issues, and that didn't quite work out too well. And what happens right now, you're seeing the parents, they really want their sons and daughters are ready to go to school, they move here, they want their sons and daughters to come here, they want to go to a general class. So, I think, once again, being a small school and not wanting to create separate programs, and then not having the large enough need to be forced to create separate programs, I think we make integration work, I think we make it work well, and I think parents appreciate it. So, the thing that I get from people, given the whole, you know, spectrum of why they moved here, it's a great town, small school, great reputation, and the fact is that we make integration work. So, we, you know, once again, everyone's in the classroom, working on the standards, because, once again, as far as we go back to the whole change in the whole, with the CDS no longer in IEP, the only gain of talent is towards a major diploma. So, once again, every student has to be taught in alignment to the Common Core learning standards. Everyone's sitting for these two reading exams in high school, I can't take anybody off track. Now, what happens, so knowing that, the best place for them to be is in a general setting, with a common core branch teacher, with special ed support, and more often than not, it works out pretty well. So, I don't know, any other questions? Okay, and the next page two, we talked about as far as graduation information. Just so you know, I mentioned this last year, the IEP diploma no longer exists, last year didn't exist, and it was kind of a misnomer. There wasn't a diploma, there was not an extra credential, and I think, as the state has taken a look at it, you know, you can't take the, to a job, job application and ask for a copy of diploma, it doesn't count. It's really just, just a credential. And I think what the state did, and they took that up, it was called the CDS, a, mention of, no, credential, the only occupational study. However, it's not a separate trip. It's really for those students who are working towards a major diploma or local diploma, they're coming through high school, preparing the best we can, they're taking reading exams, and about the sophomore or junior year, based upon all the test data we have, I have a good idea of how people are going to fare with the reading exams. You begin to layer on some level of, say, intro occupations and BOSI's, so they can earn CTE credits, and at some point, based upon the data we have, when it becomes obvious that a local diploma is not going to happen, based upon the reading scores. What happens is that we then lay on top of that some kind of job training skills, either BOSI's or the worst of their programs, I'd say Abilities First, and then they can earn this certificate, but it's not a valid credential. The state's hoping that the business community will take a look at it, they added some more weight to it, they added some narrative language to it, talk about someone's reading skills and math skills, so it's just not a piece of paper, that someone can't figure out what this individual can do, hoping that local businesses will take it and then get enough information from there, and allow it to offer some of the job. So, but there's, I don't think it's quite, I don't think the State Chamber of Congress has officially adopted this wholesale, but that is the direction. The SAC, Skills and Achievement Commencement Prudential, was meant to address people, once again, once they used to get the IEP, and now it's all about the most profoundly handicapped individuals. So, once again, they want to kind of parse out the individuals who almost earned a local diploma, have some reading ability, have some math ability, have some good pragmatic skills, they have a CDS credential, as compared to individuals who clearly may be non-verbal, may need some kind of tertiary care for the rest of their lives, some kind of daily supervision, they want to kind of split those two groups out, if they work towards what's called Skills and Achievement Commencement Prudential. And this year, we'll have those students earning the CAF. If you take a look, as far as the programs, everything is really the same. We, for the most part, at Chancellor, we have special ed teachers embedded in a general classroom, working with general teachers. You know, if need be, they can pull out and be doing a little small group instruction for some discrete skill training. Once again, the direction's pretty clear for me, is that if it can be done in classrooms, stay in classrooms, I don't want people to be pulled out if it can be done in there. Once again, people need to differentiate construction. One team's going to be talking, and the second is going to be talking, with respect to ESL, is moving towards a universal design for learning, which is kind of new in the literature, and it came out of actually the world of architecture, based upon, based upon the ADA. So, when the ADA came out, and they told public spaces, they had to have reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities, disabilities and rents. The architectural world got together and developed a building space and a parking space that was originally designed for everyone. So, that's kind of corrupted education, so people now are going to develop off the lesson plans that can accommodate all levels. We'll go into that more in the ESL. Then, once again, high school, middle school too, like I said, typically in middle school, we have a resourceful program, special ed teacher, teacher assistant embedded in a general class, I think office support is appropriate, as we kind of shift from Chancellor to Buckley. Once again, counseling's available, we have been able to increase speech into the middle school and high school this year. school and high school this year. So once again, several students receiving speech in the high school and the middle school, and with the goal, and once again, to get students to become independent enough and responsible enough to come into high school and really function in a research model. So they can go out to a general class, you know, do what they need to do in that class, and then bring them back to the research teacher for additional support. And I'm saying that's worked out pretty well over the last fifteen years. You know, so, once again, as far as the programs here, not much has changed. We did have that one class, I mentioned to you last year, coming from fifth to sixth, what's happening right now in middle school, the self-entertained classroom, and that's going very well also. And something I mentioned last year, that we had several students of the same kind of functionality and disability factors, and given the fact they were all within a three-year grade range, we'd be able to create a program here and not have to go see what the BOSIs or look at some other day program. And given the needs of the students kind of on the outside of them, they were able to be supported and bringing somebody up from Chancery. So a different kind of model, but one that's worked out fairly well. Once again, so as far as the impact here, we put that into the bottom here as far as spectrum sources, if you look at current research, it says that, you know, the incidence of autism is rising, I mean, something's now one in eighty-eight, I think it's one in a thousand. So it's unbelievable, I don't know if it's all things, it's kind of hard to figure out why. Better diagnostic tools, more for parents and doctors, it's kind of hot, but it just, you know, the students we work with here, who are on a spectrum, from my experience, you see them, you know, they're clearly on a spectrum, they have social and language pragmatic issues, you can see this kind of social profile, we're not looking at necessarily sensitive children who might be shy, they clearly have some kind of social pragmatic issue. And as you can see through the data here, going back from, you know, two thousand and one, two thousand and two, three, narrow to twenty. And that, you know, and once again, we have a couple of students, handful of students who are, you know, either diagnosed with a high functioning spectrum or, you know, staff here think that they meet their criteria, who don't necessarily need a special ed level of service, may have a Section 5 Core Plan. So if you include those students into that mix, then that is probably closer to thirty. So once again, growing trend, the impact on programs is that typically when they're younger, given their need socially and just how difficult that is with peers and how they're going to navigate that, they need a lot more adult support. So once again, so you can have one or two students at a grade level really take up a large amount of adult time because we have to help them kind of navigate this world. You know, someone says something to them, they misinterpret it, and then we're all that races. So once again, you can see although our classification rate seems fairly low compared to everybody else, you know, a couple of students on the spectrum can really eat into resources for the material resources. And I don't see that number changing or going decreasing anytime soon. Anybody have any questions at all?
Richard, you just said that you don't see this number decreasing, do you see it continuing to increase?
Potentially, I mean, once again, knowing who we have here coming in and aging in, if people don't vent to us, I think we're going to be consistent because the student at the center obviously is on a spectrum, so that student's going to age next year, whether they're here or they're set. We have a student, a student that was not through the CPSE process, came into us, came to go out last year, with a parent who looked comfortable, didn't quite know, got some bad information from some people, that individual's clearly on a spectrum too. So once again, knowing students who are coming in, I think will stay this way for a while because there are also students that people kind of think and appear to act like they're on that. And once again, to, given the fact that we're really doing, you know, integration quite well, if you're a parent in another district or you're looking to move into a, you know, a school community that really accepts everybody, you know, this is the place you're coming to, going back to the interest of the questions. So I don't, I don't see that going down, and given our population right now too, if it did go down, I could go down to two or one, three, I don't see it dropping back down. That just seems out there. Given everybody else, and I talked to all the chairs in all the districts, and this is a phenomenon that's happening across the county, across the state, so I don't see why we would necessarily be any different than anybody else. And given our relative population, I think we're a similar ratio that Reddit may have and that Kixi may have and all that. So I see us staying at that right now and potentially inching up, you know, one a year, maybe two, so maybe in five years we're at twenty-five, twenty-six. What I wanted to do too is, I've kind of talked a little bit about special ed as far as the teacher training and the talking points, I know that ESL's been a topic of conversation, and I've chanced, luckily spent a couple of weeks reviewing the new regulations, so the new CR one fifty-four dash two. The big changes that are going to happen that impact us is that, once again, you can see the level of accountability increasing as far as the state, the schools, as far as students most at risk. The big changes that are going to happen, a couple of changes, one, they're requiring, they've always recommended all staff get some level of ESL training, that's always happened, but once again, it's been recommended, so we kind of hit and miss. Now they're requiring all staff in the district, all teachers, everyone, have fifteen percent of their PD time devoted specifically to Ls, English language learners. So once again, to think about, it'd be a four or so tense conference days, roughly four of those hours have to be devoted to strategies specifically for Ls, and that's across the state. The good thing about that also is that universal design for learning is a great strategy to address the needs of Ls at the same time it addresses the needs of students who are classified. So once again, so this is a great direction to move into anyway, it just means as a plan, we have to take a look at conference time and earmark something that we know is going to definitely address those needs. The other issue that's going to impact us as far as staffing is concerned is the new requirements. So it happened for Ms. Berger, who was a ESL teacher, who potentially, you know, she does this in the middle school and high school, have four or five students, what's going to be now we're a small school, we got thirteen students ESL, that's from K to twelve. So we got one student who's potentially a eleventh grader, one student's a tenth grader, we have students in eighth grade and from one to seventh grade, and there wasn't no necessarily regulations about who she could pull up to stand alone ESL class. So she would have a unit, two periods devoted here, actually the first three periods, period one, two, and three devoted here, and really have to take care of all of our ESL needs here with respect to units of service. And she can group students in a class with grade spans probably ranging from five years. Now the requirement is we can do that. So she has a standalone ESL class, there's only two continuous grades. In addition, any student who receives more than one unit of ESL has to have ESL teacher, English speakers of other languages, ESL, embedded in the ELA class. So the way we've been doing this can no longer be done the same way. So right now we have thirteen students, and each and every one of them receiving one unit of study of ESL a week, that's one hundred and eighty minutes, so comes down roughly to one period. There's no way Robyn Berger has thirteen periods in her to satisfy all of her needs. And what it means is we have four students, say, seven, eight, ten, eleven, she's got to be in their English class, seven, eight, ten, eleven, that's four periods, four students. And then she can then come out and teach a standalone ESL within two years, which means she can put seven and eight together, and she can put ten and eleven together, and then that's her day. And we still have eight students to address. So, and looking at the new regs, and once again, you want the ESL teachers to integrate into the English language arts program. And once again, when you pull them out, students fall behind, not getting a Common Core curriculum, at some level in high school, they got earning high school credits, you know, the ESL classes, everything, the new regs want her in. So once again, taking a look at projections for next year, using this year's current data, we probably have ten to twelve devoted periods of service that have been needed to be provided. Just way up. And given, and that's simply knowing, that's simply knowing what we have based upon this year's role, we could have people move in K to twelve and simply need to have service. Typically for a bilingual program, you need to have more than twenty students out of grade. So if we had twenty students of the same language, had a grade, we have to offer a bilingual program. Once again, because of our size, you know, we never have that many students. And once again, because we're small, the old model, it kind of worked. The other implication with respect to Ms. Berger, she's also a certified reading teacher. And what we've done at Chancery, because of the younger children, we've been able to kind of overlap and have her provide some ESL, in addition to some AIS reading, but that's not going to happen with her. So what happens is that she's going to be a full-time ESL teacher, probably working with a handful of students as she integrates in their English classes and provide standalone ESL services. So, once again, you can see the changes here where she's not going to provide the typical AIS reading schedules. Not only, it looks like we're going to need a new ESL teacher, Brett's going to lose probably, you know, AIS reading slots for about eight to ten years, since we've given the fact now she can't do both of those.
So, Richard? So it sounds like from what you're saying that we're going to need to budget potentially for another position.
Yeah.
A position and a half.
I would go at least one. I mean, the bottom line is that, you know, you just have two students move in and walk in grades, and then you got two, well, you got one and a half.
Is any of the requirement, the English language learner requirement they've just been talking about, going to result in an extra state aid to the district? So that's coming out of...
Excuse us while we smile and answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I read through the memo, right, there's no, if we do this, you will get such a clash. It's simply you will do this. Also, from my point of view too, not from my point, mine is shop, I now have to have yearly readings with L students as if, not saying as if the CSC, but we want a formal process. You also need qualified interpreters. Typically, we use people from now Rymac as interpreters, which is fine, but the regs do state that a qualified interpreter needs to be somebody who, if they were here at this meeting, could speak fluently and pragmatically, given the context. So once again, I couldn't have an interpreter come with that family if they couldn't do a thorough one. So once again, we've had some people who spoke both in Spanish and English, and they can kind of make it work. The regs now want people to be fluent within the context of a conversation so they can communicate everything clearly exactly. So once again, that changes issues also because if just a typical cohort of translators who are young and running don't meet that criteria, now I, we have to find qualified interpreters, which would be then BOSIs at cost.
So I mean, maybe that the ELL teacher would be a possible interpreter too, where they would speak...
If they could speak, if they could.
Ideally, that would be...
Ideally. If they could, they would. Robin's not fluent in Spanish. And if you think about it, it's, ESL is immersion, Spanish students coming to America, it's like Mr. Orza had immersion Spanish, when he walked into all yours' class, he didn't speak English, and the reality was that students spoke fluent Spanish. When Spanish students come to her, because it's an ESL standalone program, she doesn't walk to work, she speaks English, because they need to speak English. And the bottom line is that looking at students who come into here over the years, it works really well. You have a student graduate from high school a couple of years ago, who came into us as a freshman in high school, not being able to speak a word of English, and graduated with a diploma from Rymac High School, which was a V.A. So Robin doesn't bridge us two worlds. A bilingual program, they would. But that's, once again, a different situation.
What, how do you, so if you come into Rymac, let's say even earlier than that, you know, as an English language learner, third grade, but, you know, by sixth grade, you're, you know, or even sooner, because some children pick it up so quickly, do you, is there some way that you are not, you know, you're no longer classified as an English learner?
What happens when you come in, the first thing that happens is that people fill out a whole language question, you know, with Mary Ann on the new one. And what happens is it triggers any of her red flags, she then passes along to myself. What happens is I let Robin know that she's going to do an assessment, the NICE test, to see about their language proficiency. So once again, Robin, that kind of triggers a series of assessments. Robin, this is a test, this is not an English language arts test, it's just a language test. So once again, sometimes the teachers, they have a hard time because, you know, they'll think about what students do in an English language arts class, and I'm like, no, this is just language, this isn't English language arts. If a student qualifies, they've got certain levels, they've got beginner, intermediate, advanced, proficient, and each person requires different units of study. So from K eight, everybody from the lowest level requires two units of study a week, so one unit's a hundred and eighty minutes. So if you think about it, if they're a beginner, they get two periods a week devoted to ESL services, which is why the state wants one to be embedded in the English class because to pull these students out means they're missing first teachers. But they do understand the need for language acquisition, so there has to be that kind of separate potential standalone class just to work on the language component. At the high school level, if you come as a freshman, you test beginner, you get three units a week, because now they realize you don't have a lot of time for that. Once again, two of those units have to be embedded, actually, two can be embedded in one standalone, or one embedded, two standalone, but either way, those are the rules. What happens, every year they take the NICE test, NICE slide, which is now proficiency test for the language, and if they score proficient, then they come out of the ESL classification. So there's a yearly test thing that, I get the results in August, and then we determine Robin's schedule, things of that nature. So they come in with an assessment, and they leave a passing proficiency. They are going to give the CSC, the students who are classified and ESL, the power to take them out of ESL status, that's going to require a score at level three or higher on a three to eight ELA test or EASL exam. So once again, so if a student who may for some reason, whatever, not do well on the NICE slide, and we have other data to support our claims that may have not ESL, you know, students anymore, we can make a decision. Those changes will also make data to CSC remain. So once again, so I do recommend that we're going to have to budget for enough ESL teacher at a minimum, and just so you know, the issue is going to be everyone across the state went to the same regs, so there's probably going to be a flood on applications. And then the thing, and the thing is, and once again, to add up, I can't predict when students come in with grade levels, that's going to have to be kind of on a peer-on basis. If someone has to come in and walk with grade and you can't reach them, we're going to have to then at that point address somehow potentially high someone for three, point six, whatever the case may be. The other thing that I want to tell this first, talking points is, it's all idea emotionally fragile. Just so you know, that seems to be a growing trend across school districts. I had a conversation with a school attorney about, just kind of trends in general, and they said over the thirty year career at special ed, the first thing is all about reading, nobody doing anything about reading, you know, all these private schools opened up to just reading, and everything is about reading. Second ten years is all about autism. People didn't know anything about autism, asperger's, high functioning asperger's, what the schools could do. Now it's about emotionally fragile kids. So kids who academically don't require special services, intellectually they're intact, they have good reading, writing, and math scores, but they're anxious, they're potentially suicidal, or at least expressing suicidal intent, they're fragile, emotionally needy. And now, if you've got this growing group of kids who may go to four wins, get a diagnosis of mood disorder, maybe diagnosed with bipolar, don't need resource room because academically they're strong, but now what happens is they can't come to school. So now we throw them on some home band instruction, kind of help them through a transition. And at some point then, what's going to happen is that if they're not able to transition back, it may be referral to the CSC, but once again, it's kind of a all the kind of situation because they don't need resource room, they don't need consultant teachers because academically they sound, they may need counseling, they may need, maybe a behavior plan, but the whole goal being that they're back to school. And the trend with these kind of students across the country and across the state, state according to Gary, the school attorney, is that these students tend to be looking for some of those hour-bound programs, to kind of go, for some reason, become emotionally stable, get back into a good functioning place, these programs range from six to twelve weeks, and then once they're able, once again, to kind of, you know, adapt and to kind of deal with whatever issues are, you know, impacting them, and then transition back into the school. So once again, that's a growing trend, talking to other directors, the principals of course, ministers in high schools, that's what they're seeing. And once again, you know, I wish I had an easy answer for what to do with that, you know, but no, the students are just emotionally fragile, and for a short period of time, need a ton of support. Not academically, they don't have reading disabilities, they're on the spectrum, they don't have ABD, but they're just emotional, just vulnerable. So that's a growing trend in population. Okay, so my last page, I think it's five, I'm in the second last page yet? The classification rate's eleven percent, so once again, given all the amount of students who moved in, that's probably the difference from last year in nine point seven. So once again, if you lose four and have thirteen, given the size of our school, that probably means explains why we're not at point three. And as I said, the state average is thirteen percent, so we're right kind of where we need to be. As far as suspensions, once again, kind of ticking down last year, although ten of those days were events that happened off campus. So I think we do a good job with students who are classified as far as dealing, working with them. I know, once again, Mark's really good, Mr. Berger, trying to incorporate the PLS people, so it could be dismissed out in the middle school, it could be dismissed, dismissed from the mental health or psychology, Mr. Rodier, as far as if it doesn't necessarily need to be a discipline issue, kind of gets through, talk to the council, like talk to the school psychologists, you know, social worker, you get a sense, okay, so what's going on, how do we fix this, just as not simply a discipline issue where Mark simply takes a referral and issues a discipline issue. So we do do a lot of that, so, which I think is positive. So we do do a lot of that, so, which I think is positive, is just that sometimes you have the nature of some students and just how they respond to events, it can get turned towards positive. One thing I'm particularly proud of is over the last, given this is my fourth year here, there have been no impartial hearings. So I spend an important amount of time talking to people. This is improved that. I like to talk to people, I like to know people, I like to develop a sense of community. And I think that shows, and how people trust us. Maybe this three times, which is the task, because it's their children and obviously the school administration, I have regulations to follow, I've got laws to follow. But I think overall, it works out really well, and whatever differences we do have, we're able to simply address in a moment. So once again, so in the last three years here, that one impartial hearing was something that was kind of transitioning between Dr. Eagle and myself, there are no pending impartial hearings, and I think that's, you know, speaks over the district. Teachers are supportive and accommodating, and I just think that kind of helps. I think once it goes back to your question, why people want to move here, because now they talk to people in the community, I think they get a lot of support. And last but not least, like I mentioned, ESL thirteen students, K to twelve, and homeless this past year, four students. Once again, a little bit higher than we've had previously, we've had a couple of students come in and come in, come out. Most of those students are people who, excuse me, are double in the family. So I think from my conversation with people down the city who really consult me upon the homelessness law, something I think typically in the past, people would not have considered to be a transition, you know, going home with mom and dad, with our kids while we kind of figure things out. I think they've realized now that it's not a permanent house, it's a temporary situation. Oftentimes, parents and their children do get in conflict, and sometimes they all can't live in the same roof. So once again, so they've, most of the students, excuse me, families in Rhinebeck find themselves in that situation, and really it's not their house, you know, if something should happen, they could be asked to leave. So it does fit the definition of, of, of the law, so they're the ones who come and count the most, so, you know, that's a couple of that for people. And that's pretty much special, I imagine, because.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I always learn so much, so I really appreciate what you do. I have a question about, and I'm unclear about, people in the curriculum committee would know better, changes that are being thought of to make, and in what types of Regents exams are going to be taken, so that maybe you don't have to take, you can do some substitutions, which I know there are some concerns in sort of the general ed population about what that means about making substitutions for Regents exams, about what the state values. On the other hand, you and I had a brief conversation that for special education students, it might open up some opportunity.
It might. It all depends. I mean, right now, from what I understand, what's being spoken about, and it's probably obviously more Marvin's corner, but I think they're willing to have four reals exams, maybe have another one, say, art technology to substitute. I think the exam they're looking to take out is a tenth grade global, and from what I understand, it's causing a lot of tension in this state, because it's as if people feel as if, why should that not matter? So once again, they had to pick one in five, and knowing that whoever they picked is going to be high tension because people feel as if they don't want to water down the curriculum, and I definitely get that. But I just think that you want to give students alternative needs, semi-graduate from high school. Not everybody's going to the college and have PhDs in math, so I don't think they need to have calculus. You know, my daily job, I don't use calculus, I don't use geometry, and I'm pretty effective. So once again, I think people understand that pragmatically right now, the world's pretty diverse, it's multi-determined, and therefore, different pathways may be appropriate. So they're looking to, to do something like that. I think right now, I don't know if it's been adopted, but if it has been adopted, known to develop testing. And I think what they're going to do is simply say to us, you develop. Probably. They're going to give people some little control. I think it's a great, great direction to go in, but given the safety net to students with disabilities and how they, well, they can score on this test, I do think that those are pretty generous, so it's not like we're deserving people, but I think taking the pressure off might be useful. So once again, that's kind of a, to be seen where that goes.
Thanks.
Yes?
I assume the foundation philosophy for all of special ed is that you intervene as quickly as possible, is that right? I mean, given the fact that there's finite money.
You want.
In the district, and we've heard a couple of times, I think it's even board policy, about a concept of equivalence, which means that the money and the resources have to be spread evenly. How does that equate with the, with special ed and wanting to intervene as quickly as possible? How can you honor equivalence at the same time as you're trying to intervene as quickly as possible?
Yeah, well, that goes back to the RTI memo, and really the RTI laws. Once again, if you, if you use universal screening, now we're using it with the matched data, which just, you know, is wonderful because it's objective data. One of the problems, and once again, as a principal, so psychologists, all my tests from the law are referenced. So once again, you think about that, I'm going to go into my college days philosophy, that's an is world. Well, three A is an or world. So a bunch of smart people got in the room and decided what students ought to know. They don't jive around. So what happens, three A tests, set the bar high, so, once again, and Marvin had mentioned to you, the company that doesn't match, NWEA, did a study linking theirs test scores to proficiency or higher. And that students need to test at seventy percentile, that's twenty-five percent of your population, I can tell you that's not going to happen. So what we do then, once we go back to RTI model, we have universal screening, everybody gets it in K one, two, three, we've identified reading, actually it's listening skills and some basic math skills. And then we use that data to inform AIS. And once again, going back to why it's hard to determine who has a learning disability when they're young, because that spans quite wide. So we then appropriately identify students who may be at risk in K. And then we give them AIS, RTI, and now we're, they're progress monitoring, we're looking for data to find out how they're responding to intervention. If they're responding, then great, that's all the purpose of the program, and as we continually dip the students vis a vis the maps, enter any kind of small curriculum-based material, they're going in a great direction, wonderful. So we've intervened early, it's still a general ed service, and hopefully doesn't require special ed support later on. However, based upon the law, I need to see RTI data, where people are addressing these data, and they can tell me, you know, we've been doing fluency for six months, and the student's making slow progress, and I can show it to you vis a vis your breath. And then we do it on the universal screening, so you take the whole thing, what's happening in AIS, what's happening in general ed program, and you can still see that the student is, say, at the percentile rank of ten, which is pretty low. We have several pieces of those data points going to happen at some point. Someone says, maybe it's more than just simply the wrong instructional style, or the wrong pedagogy, maybe they have a learned disability. So once again, so as far as allocation of resources, it's kind of like, you know, we're all there early on. Once again, it's general ed and special ed, and once again, students are so young and they're all learning the same thing, it's pretty good. The only difference would be if someone came to us from preschool special, so they already been identified, and I know what services they may or may not need, so if they need the services, they get them from the very beginning. But if somebody else comes in and things look pretty good, we want to first address them with some services and see how they respond. And if they respond well, wonderful. But if they don't, then we have some data there to prove that, and at some point we're going to say, well, listen, this means as if it may be something more, it could be a learned disability, and we have these data points now to, you know, indicate this may be an issue, now we take the next step, protect and refer to CSC. And at that point, once again, as far as equity goes, if a student's classified, well, then by law, they're entitled to have the CSC, the terms. So as far as money and resources now, they get, it's not a question where if we classify someone, you know, you say, they don't go. So, once again, then, so that's kind of how that works at some level. So it starts off kind of a general program when they're young, and then as they, as they go through the system, you see how things kind of, kind of fall, falls apart. Does that make sense?
Anyone else with questions for Richard? All right, thank you.
Thanks for watching.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.